I want to call to order the February 24, 2015, meeting of the Oshkosh Common Council. And I want to welcome those of you that are here in the council chambers tonight to the council chamber. I also want to welcome those who might be watching this on Channel 10, those who might be watching on their computers, those who might be listening on their computers, or those who might be listening on the radio. This is your city government, and we do want you to take advantage of participating in any way that feels good to you. So, welcome to all. I think before we actually get started with kind of the business part of the meeting, I'm going to ask the city manager to introduce a new city employee to us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my pleasure to introduce Alexa Najunas. Alexa, if you could stand up, please. Alexa's our new assistant planner and planning division, obviously. She's going to be assisting us with our neighborhood programs. She can -- Liz Williams, Darren Burridge, and the staff there. So if anybody's interested in forming a neighborhood association, Alexa will be one of the people that you'll be contacting. I'm sure you'll be seeing her at Plan Commission meetings and neighborhood meetings in the near future. But we wanted to make sure that you had a chance to meet her and see her face-to-face and welcome her to the city.
Welcome, Alexa. Welcome. Okay, I'm going to ask the clerk to take the roll call of the council members.
Peck?
Here.
Herman?
Here.
Allison Osby?
Here.
Pansky?
Here.
Fitzgerald?
Here.
Cummings?
Here.
Tower?
Here.
Present Seven.
I'm going to ask all to rise for the invocation to be led by Council Member Peck and the pledge of allegiance to be led by our students.
We ask for guidance tonight as we begin this meeting. May all those who participate in our discussions and our decisions reflect the values that we cherish in this great city.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask our students to turn around now so the people out there in television land can see who you are. Okay, also, I think people would like to know who you are, know just a little bit about you here. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to pass the microphone down. I want each one of you to introduce yourselves, speak right into the microphone, and tell us where you go to school and what year in school you are, and if you're involved in some activities outside of school or at school in ways outside the classroom.
Hello, my name is Jake Cutter. I go to South Park Middle School, and I am in eighth grade. I participate in football, basketball, and track.
My name is Haley Tolvar, and I go to Perry-Tipler Middle School, and I am in seventh grade, and I love basketball and gymnastics.
My name's Emily Rowland. I go to South Park Middle School. I'm in eighth grade, and I play soccer, and I run cross-country and track.
I'll tell you athletes here. Good. What I have here is a certificate because we do appreciate you taking time, coming down, and leading the pledge for us. So I'm going to pass out the certificates in appreciation to you. Jake? Haley? Emily? All right. So we can have a hand for our students. Appreciate it. And you folks are welcome to take off and do whatever you still need to do tonight. So again, thanks for being here. Okay, also tonight, we have a special presentation, and I'm going to turn it over to the city manager to introduce our speaker, provide us with the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my pleasure to introduce Jerry DeShane. Jerry is the executive director of the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, and I had the pleasure of working with Jerry on the board in our, I guess, our transition from Jerry assuming the role earlier last year. And Jerry's going to be talking about the Partnership for Prosperity program that has been initiated by the League to communicate some of the League's initiatives and things they'll be working on in the next few years after our strategic plan was adopted. So Jerry, I'll leave it up to you.
Thank you very much, Mark. Thank you, Mayor Tower. Good evening, members of the council and residents of the city of Oshkosh. I've been with the League now for about 10 months, and one of our highest priorities -- Mark was on our Board of Directors for most of that time -- one of our highest priorities is to reengage with our membership, and that's you. That's getting to know you, getting to know the needs of the city of Oshkosh. I was up in Marinette yesterday, over in Peshtigo. So far in about 10 months, I've covered about 20,000 miles and have met, I think conservatively, about 500 of your peers. What I'd like to do tonight is talk a little bit about the state legislature, the legislative process, and at the end of this, I've got a sales pitch. There's something that I'm going to ask each of you, so be prepared for that. If you look at our presentation on your monitors, it's called the Partnership for Prosperity. The League exists for two reasons. First, to educate its members, but second of all, to educate the state legislature about the needs of local government. And in the past, we've done that by bringing them a laundry list of complaints, asks, pleadings, whatever you want to call it, and we decided to take a different look at it this year and to take a different tack, which is to recognize that the state cannot function if the city of Oshkosh cannot function, and vice versa. You need the state, the state needs you. We're partners. Whether we love it or hate it, we are partners with the state of Wisconsin, and so what our legislative agenda is this year is an invitation to the state to partner with us. And I'll talk about the details. I know that you're also interested in what's going on with the governor's budget, which was introduced just a few weeks ago, how that's going to impact your city, how that's going to impact communities across the state. My challenge, according to the mayor, is to get all of this done in about 10 minutes or less to allow for time for questions. So here we go. First, a little bit about the League. For those of you that are not familiar with us, we've been around a long time, founded in 1898. That is Mark up in the upper left-hand corner. You can see Board Services aged him just a little bit. No, seriously, those were our founding fathers. We were founded at the time when women did not have the right to vote, so we are quite old. There are almost 600 members of the League. We represent every city in the state of Wisconsin and virtually all of the villages. Median-sized member of the League has a population of about 1,450. Now, let's take a look at our partner, the Wisconsin State Legislature. There are 19 Republican, 14 Democrats in the state senate, 63 Republicans, 36 Democrats in the Assembly. We're a nonpartisan organization, but we have to recognize that our partner is a partisan organization, and we have to live and work in their world. The legislative leadership, State Senator Scott Fitzgerald is from Dodge County. The minority leader is Senator Jennifer Schilling from La Crosse. The Speaker of the Assembly, which is a title that essentially means what he says goes in the state assembly, is Robin Voss. The minority leader is Peter Barca. Then there are what I call the local caucus. Seventeen members of the 33-member state senate, we're at one time or another in local government, and I bring that up for a very specific reason. Again, we are partners, and in many ways, this is the training ground for the state legislature. Forty-five members of the state assembly have held an elected position at the local level. When I look at Oshkosh's elected state legislators, Steve Hints is a former city manager -- no, excuse me -- manager or consultant.
Gordon.
And Gordon Hints, not Steve Hints. His father is a city manager. But Gordon Hints was -- has a background in city management, and State Senator Mark Gudekx was the mayor of Mayville until he was elected to the legislature, was also on the Fond du Lac City Council. So again, that connection exists. Turning to look at what we perceive to be the challenges going forward, this is the state's budget time. The governor introduces his budget during the months of January, February of every odd-numbered year, and the legislature hems and haws over it for about four months before finally passing it in May. The state's transportation fund is in very serious deficit shape, and since we rely on the state for general transportation aids, for transit aids, where they go, we go. We're very concerned about room taxes. I don't know if the city of Oshkosh has a room tax ordinance. You do? The state legislature last session looked at a bill that would curtail your ability to decide where to spend that money, essentially put it into the hands of more of a private-sector council. Merits to it, good idea, bad idea, you can debate that all day long, but the fact of the matter is that is not in the interest of most cities. We're concerned that that was going to come up, that the state would also take away or water down your ability to charge your utility for payments in lieu of taxes. There is also some talk at the state legislature about post-retirement health benefits, requiring you to fund those upfront, which would be another added cost to local governments. Limitations on annexation powers, there will be bills introduced to take away more of a city's ability to annex. There will be more limitations on extraterritorial zoning, and we are always worried about the legislature passing bills that limit local finance decision is a nice way to put it. But the first surprise when we saw the governor's budget was that local governments actually came out pretty well. Consider, if you will, that the governor was facing a $2.2 billion structural deficit. The promises that were out there exceeded the state's means by over $2 billion. The governor's proposing $300 million in cuts to the University of Wisconsin system, but there are no cuts in his budget to shared revenue, there's no cuts to the expenditure restraint program, or to local governments' transportation aids, or to our transit aids, no additional restrictions on levy limits. So that's all good news in a very tough budget year, but I'll call your attention to my last bullet point. It's early, it ain't over yet. There's always a lot of pushing and pulling back and forth, you know, "Don't cut him, don't cut her, don't cut me." Well, nobody wants to pay the price or pay the penalty, so things could change. Another surprise in the state budget that we did not expect was a proposal to do a wholesale change of the assessment process. Mr. Roloff and I talked briefly about this. I understand there are a lot of questions, but essentially, the governor is proposing shifting from a municipal-based system for small communities to a county-based system. And this, oh, I would say three-quarters of the states do it this way now. It's a county-based or some regional-based system. It's not a town-by-town, village-by-village, city-by-city system. There was an article in the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel earlier this year, no, excuse me, late last year if you want to Google it, that talked about some of the inconsistencies that the state sees in that process. The city of Oshkosh could opt itself out if it chose to. First- and second-class cities can opt out and continue to do what you're doing. I know there's at least one Fox Valley community that just spent, oh, I believe $100,000 was the number, on an assessment software system. So for them to simply abandon that at this time doesn't make any sense. The ink is not dry on this. I've been a lobbyist for about 20 years. My political barometer says this gets pulled out of the budget and dealt with separately. So don't -- it could happen that this would remain and become law. I frankly doubt it. Third budget surprise, the local government property insurance fund. Mr. Roloff, is the city of Oshkosh participating in the fund? Do you insure your property in the fund?
Oh, yes, we do.
Yeah, there are about 1,000 communities in Wisconsin rely on this state-run insurance program for your property insurance. I don't have the number off the top of my head. I want to say $50 billion in local government property is insured by the fund, but the problem is that the state is not a good fund manager. The fund is currently losing money. Not that many years ago, the state gave $12 million in surplus away out of the fund. This happened about four or five years ago, and as a result, they're in a deficit. And in the governor's budget, he said, "There are private-sector alternatives. Local government can go to the private sector." That is turning out to be a lot more complicated than I think anyone expected, and this too, if I had to guess, will come out of the budget. The League participates. We have an insurance company that provides insurance coverage to our members. We don't currently provide this type of coverage, but we're looking at it. We're not going to leave any of our members hanging out there. On the upside, Senator Gudekx is marshaling through several changes to tax increment financing that would help TIF districts that are struggling, would also remove some of the paperwork barriers in the TIF program. We expect to see some positive improvements in TIF law as a result of Senator Gudekx's work. We're also working with several freshman legislators. I talked about that local caucus. These are freshman legislators. One of them is a mayor, still serving mayor. I love mayors. Just ask anybody, Mayor Tower. Yep. He's not smiling. We're working with them for a little bit of flexibility on levy limits. Levy limits will be with us forever, but what we're asking the state legislature for is some flexibility, what's called carry-forward. Let's say you have 3% new construction growth. The law currently says you could grow your levy by 3% next year, but what if you don't need 3%? Could you maybe bank half of that for a rainy day, if you will? The effect of it, if you think about it, actually reduces property taxes in the short run, so it should be appealing, and it allows a community not to be into this use-it-or-lose-it mentality. But we're getting some traction among legislators for that idea. There, if you've been watching the state transportation debate, and I'm looking at the clock here, realizing I'm running short of time, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, but if you've been confused by the transportation budget problem, go to that website and watch the three-minute video called Filling the Potholes. The Local Government Institute, which the League, the towns, and the counties co-sponsor, is a research organization, and they did a research project that showed what's happening to local streets as a result of the state budget, and it's very enlightening. Partnership for Prosperity agenda, I'll just touch on a couple of quick points here. Cities and villages are where most economic activity happens in Wisconsin. 70% of the state's population lives in cities and villages. 87% of all manufacturing, all commercial property is in cities and villages. As a result, we're asking, again, for this partnership with state government. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail on these. These are agenda items that we will be pressing forward on after the governor's budget, and there's a summary in front of each of you. But what I'd like to conclude with is my sales pitch, if you will. You each have a little card in front of you. I've been a lobbyist for about 25 years. I work with the legislature on a regular basis. The League is very fortunate. You have a very talented attorney named Kurt Witinski as the primary lobbyist, who has been working with the legislature for 27 years, but neither of us can do our job effectively without you. There is absolutely no way our organization can be effective unless Senator Gudekx hears from you, unless Representative Hints hears from you. What I'm asking you to do, there's a card in front of each of you, asking you to join what we call our Lobby Corps, and we also have what's called the Rapid Action Team. The difference between the two is Lobby Corps, we will ask you to come to Madison three times a year and talk to your legislators there. Rapid Action Team, if you're not able to come to Madison, we're going to put you on an email list, and when something comes up for a vote, Senator Gudekx's TIF bills, for example, you will get an email from us saying, "Please, now's the time," and we usually have about 72 hours' notice, "Please contact Senator Gudekx." But I can't emphasize this enough. We need your expertise, we need your knowledge. There's an old, old saying that "all politics is local." Well, the bottom line is, you're the folks that vote for the folks that are in the Capitol in Madison. You're the people whose opinion really matters, so please join that. I want to wrap up with a short presentation, and then I'll take any questions you may have, and I thank you for giving me a little bit of extra time. But one of your members or one of the people in this room took the time to get involved. He sort of took us up on it, took us seriously when we said that we need your knowledge, we need your expertise. Your city manager, Mark Roloff, has been a member of the League's Board of Directors from 2011 until just last October, and that was probably one of the most dynamic periods in the League's recent history. My successor or my predecessor had been in office for 25 years. The League had been a very stable organization. We had a strategic plan. Under the technology component, the strategic plan said we should get a toll-free telephone number. There were a lot of things at the League that needed to be updated and that needed to be changed, and Mark was an important part of that. And Mark, on behalf of the League of Municipalities, I'd like to thank you for your work and present you with this plaque and recognition.
Thank you.
And by the way, once we got a hook in and we don't let him go, Mark and my membership and communications coordinator, Gail Sumy and I, were downstairs in your TV studio talking about how the League could use that sort of video to get the word out. So we'll never let him go. I thank you very much. I realize I've run a little bit long, but do you have any questions for me?
Just a quick question, Mr. DeShane. I appreciate your giving that breakdown of the caucus. I was telling Sumy before, I do enjoy reading the municipality. I noticed in the last issue, you identified all of the new and existing legislators, both in the Assembly and Senate, that are local members, I'm sorry, had been members of their local village board and city council. Is that a higher number than we've experienced in past years, or is that a lesser amount?
We don't have the data. I really don't know for sure. My gut tells me it's about the same. It ebbs and flows a little bit here or there. As an observer of humanity, if you will, I was also a reporter at one time in my career, I will tell you that the people I'm looking at are sort of natural-born legislators. You are into the governing process, and believe it or not, not everybody likes to do what you do, and moving on to the state legislature is a natural progression. So my gut tells me it's about the same. I don't really have hard data to prove that.
Thank you.
So who's moving up?
I'm retiring.
Good man.
I got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
On the assessment information, you talked about moving to the counties, and we would have the choice, but as I understand it, at least talking to Mark, I think there's another issue tied into that, about 100% a year? Could you explain that a little bit? Because that probably actually is more significant in some ways to us than the other.
I refer to it as the poison pill, Jerry, because I think that that's going to be a big part of it. It's not just a get-out-of-jail-free card for us because of the requirement that is over and above anything that we're doing right now. So that's, I think that's the question. Yeah, and Mayor, what he's talking about is the other part of the change to assessment is every community, every town, city, and village would be required to assess at 100% of market value every year. And I'm not an assessor. I don't know all the ins and outs of that, but common sense tells you that that is quite a bit more work than what a lot of communities are doing now. So I, the towns' association are livid about this provision. My members, I'll be honest with you, about half the communities think it's a good idea, half think it's a bad idea, and the other half think the timing is wrong.
100% of the move to the counties?
Both.
Of both of them?
Both. It's just, it's being proposed too abruptly, that there just needs to be a little more thought in how it's done.
Any other questions? If not, I thank you for coming up here. We thank Gail for being here also. Gail's sitting in the front row right there, so.
And we'll take those cards whenever you.
If you have to take off, feel free to take off, too, although we've got a resolution coming up here pretty quickly. At least, I want to stay for that, I'm sure.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, that moves us to a new resolution. I'll read the resolution, and to read the resolution, if anybody out there would like to come and speak to the resolution, feel free to do so. After that, I'll bring it back to the council for a motion and a second. The new resolution is Resolution 15-59, Support the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Partnership for Prosperity Agenda, which you all have in the back of your books there. So anybody like to come forward to speak to that? Seeing no one come forward, I'll bring it back to the council for any questions they may have. We can ask Mark or Jerry, Gail, at this point. We sort of got some background from Jerry's discussion there, so. Okay, I'll ask clerk, I'll ask for motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Ask clerk to take the roll call vote on Resolution 15-59.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Period seven.
Okay, that takes us to a public hearing for tonight, public hearings. I'm required to read three times. If anybody, excuse me.
Pass these down.
I didn't have time to fill mine out, so I'll fill it up and get it back to you. As I was saying, we have a public hearing. They need to read this three times. During the three times I'm reading it, if any citizens would like to come forward and speak to it, please feel free to come up to the microphone up here. It's Resolution 15-60, Final Resolution Vacating Portion of Mount Vernon Street 1,400 block. Second reading, Resolution 15-60, Final Resolution Vacating Portion of Mount Vernon Street 1,400 block. Third and final reading, Resolution 15-60, Final Resolution Vacating Portion of Mount Vernon Street 1,400 block. I see no one coming forward. I'll bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask clerk to take the vote on.
I just want to mention, I mean, the Director of the Housing Authority is here tonight. I know there was some discussion last time, but if there's any questions from the council, I just wanted to make note of that. Great. Move forward.
Okay, I'll ask clerk to take the roll call vote on Resolution 15-60.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Period seven.
Okay, that takes us to citizen statements to the council. This is a time when citizens have an opportunity to come up to the microphone, maybe make some comment on something you think's going particularly well in the city you'd like to comment on, or maybe there's something you have a concern about in the city. If you'd like to make a comment about something you have a concern about, also feel free to come up to the microphone. And a few rules. One is, if you get up to the microphone, we'd like you to give us your name and your address. Limit your comments to no more than five minutes. Speak directly to the council. This is not the time to cover anything on the rest of the business agenda, and no electioneering. Anybody like to come forward at this time? I see no one coming forward, so. That takes us to the consent agenda items. Consent agenda items are a number of items that are provided to the council that are viewed to be non-controversial in nature by the administration. If either a citizen or a council member would like an item removed from the consent agenda, we will do so and consider it separately. Otherwise, the consent agenda will come forward to the council as a package. The way I'm going to do this is I'm going to read through each of the items, and for the time I read an item and you'd like to comment on it, please come up to the microphone at that time. I'll stop reading on it, and then you can comment on that particular item. When everybody's had a chance to do that, here's who, here in the council chamber. I'll bring it back to the council for discussion and then approval. Okay, approval of bills presented by the Finance Director. Receipt and filing of museum board minutes from January 8, 2015. Receipt and filing of common council minutes from February 10, 2015. Receipt of claim filed with the city's insurance company. We've got two of those, Karen Steinecke for alleged damages from the police department, the second one, Douglas Posh, for alleged damages from a fall on a patch of ice. Resolution 15-61, Award Bid for Floor Sweeper/Scrubber for Street Division to Fairchild Equipment. Resolution 15-62, Award Bid for Equipment Trailer for Street Division to the Clean Trailer Sales, Inc. Resolution 15-53, Award Bid for Skid Steer to Street Division of Fabco Equipment, Inc. Resolution 15-64, Approved Purchase of 2015 IAS World Service Agreement for IT Division to Tyler Technologies. Resolution 15-65, Award Bid for Street Sweeper for Streets Division to Bruce Municipal, Inc. Resolution 15-66, Approve Accepting Utility. Resolution 15-67, Approve Accepting Utility Easements from Winnebago County and the City of Oshkosh within Aviation Business Park. Resolution 15-68, Approved Disposition of Surplus Property to Winnebago County on West Side of Arrow Innovate Way. Resolution 15-69, Approve, or Accept Dedication of Street Right-of-Way for Arrow Innovate Way and South Side of Ripple Road Aviation Business Park. Resolution 15-70, Approved Professional Service Agreement for Engineering Construction Services with Strand Associates Aviation Business Park. Resolution 15-71, Approval of Amendment to Agreement for Engineering Services with CUNY Architects LLC for Design Bidding Construction Management Services related to Phase 3 of the upgrade of the central garage. Resolution 15-72, Reauthorize Continuance of Self-Assurance for Workers' Compensation. Resolution 15-73, Accept Street Right-of-Way for South Side of 1,000 Block East Parkway Avenue. Resolution 15-74, Authorized Sponsorship of Rain Barrel Workshop. Resolution 15-75, Approval of Special Event. Now, I'm going to read a number of special events, but I won't say special event each time. Oshkosh Festivals, Inc., to utilize city streets for their Oshkosh-St. Patrick's Day Parade and Party, March 14, 2015. Resolution 15-76, NAMI Oshkosh to Utilize City Streets for Their NAMIs. Oshkosh's Suicide Awareness 5K Run/Walk, April 25, 2015. Resolution 15-77, Bago Wall-E Club to Utilize Menominee Park for their Bago Wall-E Club Tournament Series, May 3, May 31, June 28, and July 26, 2015. Resolution 15-78, Terry's Bar to Utilize Menominee Park for their Terry's Bar Wall-E Tournament, May 16, 2015. Resolution 15-79, Oshkosh Festivals, Inc., to Utilize Leach Amphitheater Riverside Park Parking Lot in City Streets for their Oshkosh Irish Fest and 5K Walk, June 11, 12, 13, and 14, 2015. Resolution 15-80, Oshkosh Fine Arts Association to Utilize South Park for the Winnebago Art Fair, June 14, 2014. Resolution 15-81, Central Wisconsin Auto Collectors to Utilize South Park for their Central Wisconsin Auto Collectors Car Show and Flea Market, June 28, 2015. Resolution 15-82, Real Men Wear Pink of Wisconsin, Inc., to Utilize Menominee Park for the Real Men Wear Pink Softball Tournament, July 10, 11, and 12, 2015. Resolution 15-83, Oshkosh Saturday's Farmers Market, Inc., to Utilize South Park for their Market in the Park, July 15, 2015, through September 30, 2015. That's every Wednesday, so. Resolution 15-84, Wisconsin Alliance of Bass Tournament Anglers to Utilize Rainbow Park for their WABTA Oshkosh Open, July 18 and 19, 2015. Resolution 15-85, UW Oshkosh Cross Country to Utilize City Streets for their Titan 5K, August 1, 2015. Resolution 15-86, Approve Appointments for the following Boards and Commissions, Landmarks Commission, and Sustainability Advisory Board. Resolution 15-87, Approve Special Class B Licenses, Agent Change for Combination Class B License, Operator Licenses, and Taxi Cab Driver License. One more chance to come forward. One, one, twice, one, three times. Okay, I'll bring it back to the council for any questions or any desire to move any particular items from the consent agenda. Discussion on any items?
Just a question related to 15-85. I don't know if this would be best handled by Mr. Potek or Mr. Mauer, but I mean, I'm all for, you know, this type of event, but one question that I do have is I know that over the past several years, that they have put some rather significant markings down related to distance and that, and I know that as an organizer of a race, we're told that we should not be marking on city streets, or if we do.
I'll jump in on this one, because we did address that at the special events committee meeting, and they were told absolutely no markings on the pavement, because you're correct, that had happened in the past, and it was made very clear to them, so.
Because the markings from previous events are still there. Okay.
Questions or comments?
Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
This would probably be Mr. Mauer, probably. It's connected to the, to all the different fishing tournaments that are in here, so I don't know if I need to specifically address one of them. I can. Let's go with Resolution 15-77. We've had issues the last couple summers with the Menominee Park launch, when there's softball tournaments going on at the same time as the fishing tournaments. During the special events, have we made any arrangements for alternative parking for some of these events, so that they can either park on the grass that's not being used in Menominee Park, or other areas, such as we've done in the winter for out of street? And I believe that Battle and Bagel is going to be parking on the grass. Are we doing anything to make those, that lot, which is fairly small, in a multi-use lot, have we made arrangements as part of the special events for them to park in alternative locations?
Yeah, one thing the special events committee has done is we don't allow a softball tournament to take place during a fishing tournament, so we avoid some of that conflict, but we also do work with them. We actually have an agreement that they can park on the turf in certain areas, and they sign an agreement with us that if they damage any of the turf, their organization is responsible for the repairs.
Okay. Do we, as a entity, to allow these fishing tournaments and even softball tournaments to designate parking areas and actually close off parking lots for just those events, and then they either compensate us, or however? Because our call is usually the local fishermen that can't now get into the boat launch, or vice versa.
We do have in the city ordinance, if the fishing tournament is, I'd have to think back, if it's 250 boats, or 250 teams or more, they can essentially buy out the parking lot, which then gives them exclusive use of the parking lot, and we do barricade it, and they do set attendance, so that it is exclusive for their use. But otherwise, no, we, you know, it's pretty much come as you are, first come, first served. The boat trailer parking spots, we did expand last year. I don't recall how many, but we did, in lieu of some of those complaints that we did receive, expand that. But yes, we do have some alternatives for dealing with some of the bigger fishing tournaments.
Okay. And then I know last year, you sent an email out to council members that you put a temporary sign up, alerting local residents and fishing people about some of the rule changes and parking issues. Do we have a more permanent sign this year, or something that they're going to be able to see as they come into the launch areas of where parking is permitted and where it's not?
What we did last year, or I think it was two years ago now, we actually expanded the number of hours for the parking for boat launch. They can park down there, and I have to take a look at the sign again, but I believe it's Monday through Friday, they can park up until 4:00 or 5:00 p.m., because that's when the softball players start coming in. They can park in the single or double stalls, and then after that, they would start getting ticketed if they were parked inappropriately. And then on weekends, I believe we give them until 8:00 in the morning, they can park in the single and double stalls, and then, again, if we have softball tournaments or something going on, that's when we would start doing ticket enforcement.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Mr. Cummings.
Thank you, Mayor Tower. Just one comment on Resolution 15-83. I think it's great to see that the farmer's market will now be on Wednesdays as well. The times will be 3:00 to 7:00. And what, while you're up, Mr. Mauer, what, where will it be setting up in South Park?
We met with Dennis and Carleen, and actually walked out at the site. It'll be the large shelter, shelter number one. They'll be renting that for the entire duration of their season, and then they'll be setting up their vendors and their food trucks just adjacent to the shelter area.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
I think it's important to note, this is in addition to the Saturday's farmer market, not a replacement to Wednesday, so it'll be two farmer's markets during the week rather than just one, so. We appreciate that. Any other comments on anything?
Yep, I have another one.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Davis could come forward. This is dealing with the Resolutions 15-66 through 15-70, dealing with the Aviation Industrial If you could just give us an update where we're at. I know there's a lot of improvements of easements and things. Has Winnebago County approved on their end, and are we first in the chain of command, or how is this working as far as the collaboration, and how are things going with? This is just the first phase. I know we improved the Tiff District and that for a lot of these improvements and things to cover the cost, but just give us a little update.
Sure. We're doing the final design of the Aviation Business Park, which we still expect to bid this spring for construction this summer. These easements are a result of the final design, exactly figuring out exactly where the drainage soils are going to go and where the water mains are going to go. In fact, one of the water main easements is for an extra that we've actually added as an alternate bid that would improve water service to the Aviation Business Park, so that wasn't originally included in the scope of the project, but as the engineers have examined things and we look at the budget, we think we might be able to afford a little more water main extension to help the occupants in the future. So, this has been throughout the county's process. The aviation committee approved it, and the county board approved it, I think, two weeks ago, so this would be the last piece before we submit it all as a package to EDA, so they can bless it before we bid it.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Again, any questions, comments? I'm going to ask the city manager to comment on one, and that's Resolution 15-72, Reauthorize Continuance of Self-Assurance for Workers' Compensation. That's one of those kind of costs that's kind of buried in there and hidden in there that is fairly significant. You want to comment on just what that is, how that works, and the cost to us?
Sure.
Has that come down over the last few years as we've moved automated garbage trucks, which used to be the area where we used to have a lot of claims on?
We are self-insured, and so as a result of that, every two years or so, we need to have council reaffirm, that's state law, that you're self-insured for workers' comp, so that's why it's before you tonight. Workers' comp costs continue to flow up and down, because we're self-insured, we pay on actual costs incurred. Your question regarding refuse, we've seen that cost go down. There's a base cost that we pay, as well as the cost of actual losses incurred. When there's an accident, then we have to pay those out. I can tell you that the numbers have gone down dramatically for refuse workers. They used to be one of the highest rates we paid for the base of our insurance. Now, they're much lower, because essentially, they're, for the most part, they're in their truck and not getting out and wrenching their backs and things like that. So, that's been a huge improvement. We haven't had any major ones, and the only one I can recall to memory, and I know we've probably had others, but there was one, the person stepped out of the truck, because there was some problem, and they stepped out of the truck, and they hurt themselves stepping out of the truck. So, they got to stay in the truck, and that's probably the most important thing, but I think we've demonstrated that that's improved. Because it goes through cycles, you can see that on the page, it says the comparison of the fully insured versus self-insured. You'll see the claims. We put a number in just for demonstration purposes of what our average has been over the last five years, and that's $219,000. And you can see that our total cost of $305,000 went about, 70% of our costs, our claims, our overhead is very low, and that's what keeps us, keeps our rates so reasonable. If we were to go into the market for fully insured workers' comp, we'd be paying $660,000 a year, right out of the gate. So, we want, I knew that this was an issue that was sensitive to council because of our discussions about health insurance, and I think this is the type of comparison that the council was looking for, so I wanted to include that for your deliberation tonight.
Okay, if there's nothing else, I'll ask for a motion second on the consent agenda as provided to the council.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion, comments? Seeing none, I'll ask clerk to take the roll call vote of the council members on the consent agenda.
Peck.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Tower.
Aye.
Curried 7.
Okay, there were no items removed from the consent agenda, so that takes us to pending ordinances. The first one is ordinance 15-88. I will read each one of these, will consider each one separately. As I read it, if you'd like to comment on a particular ordinance, please come to the microphone, give us your name and address, and make your comments. Ordinance 15-88, Adopt Ordinants to Allow Natural Prairie Prescribed Burning and Repeal Chapter 21 Pollution. I see no one coming forward. Bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, council members? Seeing none, I'll ask clerk to take the roll call vote on ordinance 15-88.
Peck.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Tower.
Aye.
Curried 7.
Okay, that takes us to new ordinances, and new ordinances are, have to be read at two consecutive council meetings, and are not voted on till the second council meeting. So, what we're going to, what I'm going to do is I'm going to read through a number that have the first reading tonight. As I read one, if you'd like to comment on it tonight, you can. You can come up to the microphone as I'm reading that particular ordinance, but they will not come back to the council for a vote tonight. They will be read again at the next council meeting, and the council meeting, and then the council itself will consider those ordinances at that point in time at the next council meeting. The first one, ordinance 15-90, Approve Extension of Agreement with TSG for Licensing, Software Support, and Upgrade for Telephone System, and Authorize the Waiving Bids, Waiving of Bids to Purchase Telephone System Upgrades and Licensing, Software Support, and Upgrades from TSG. See no one come forward? The second one.
Mayor.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a motion on this ordinance to waive the rules and adopt them first reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we waive the rules and vote on this one tonight before taking a vote of the council, having discussion. I'll see if anybody out there would like to make a comment on the waiving of the rules and handling this one tonight. Seeing no one come forward, I'll bring it back to the council. Any discussion regarding waiving the rules?
Just, I'd like to have Mr. Roloff explain why we would want to waive the rules tonight, that there is some fiscal impacts and.
Because the city attorney asked me to, so I'll have.
All right, then, you can defer to the gentle lady.
There's some urgency with it because of our current lease running out, and so in order to facilitate that extension of the lease, which goes along with this, that's why we are requesting the waiving of the rules.
And by doing this, that there's an actual, we can realize a potential budget savings in years, in out-years?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll ask clerk to take the roll call vote on the waiving of the rules on ordinance 15-90.
Sorry. Peck.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Tower.
Aye.
Curried 7.
Okay, I'll ask for a motion second on ordinance 15-90. Now, the wave, the rules have been waived.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to take the roll call vote on ordinance 15-90.
Peck.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Pansky.
Aye.
Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Tower.
Aye.
Curried 7.
Okay, it takes us to ordinance 15-91, amend Section 23-3, Recycling Required to Update
Pansky.
Aye.
Fitzgerald.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Tower.
Aye.
Q. 7.
Okay, it takes us to Ordinance 15-91, amend Section 23-3, recycling required to update types of plastic containers accepted for recycling. See no one come forward? Council members have comments? Seeing none, I'll move to Ordinance 15-92, approval of changes for displaying annual parking permits. Coming forward, see no council members making the moves to say anything? So, Ordinance 15-93, approval of parking regulation changes on Wheatfield Way, Kentucky Street, and Florida Avenue. Okay, the last three will be considered for approval by the council at the next council meeting, so there will be further opportunity for citizens to comment on those ordinances at that particular point in time. Okay, new resolutions, and I go through these, we'll do this one at a time. The first one is Resolution 15-94, accept donations and approve agreement with Oshkosh Area Community Foundation and Gerber Leisure Products, Inc. for inclusive playground at South Park. Anybody like to come forward and speak to this?
Before I begin, I wanted to ask, we do have a couple committee members that are unable to make it. Can we speak on their behalf as well?
How long would you like to speak, is what I'm after?
A couple minutes each.
Huh?
A couple minutes each.
Okay, sure, we'll give you six, seven minutes, so go ahead.
I'm Jessica Miller, 1050 Adams Ave. in Oshkosh. First, I just wanted to say thank you for taking the time to revisit and include our project on the agenda tonight. I know I had spoke with many of you four years ago about this. Being in special education for the past six years, as well as always having willingness to be generous to others, I've been inspired to make a difference in our great community, as well as set an example for my daughter and other young people that you can do anything that you set your mind to. Four years ago, when I first approached Ray Mauer with my small vision to bring inclusion to our parks, I had no idea the doors that I would be opening. I'm incredibly humbled by the overwhelming support, commitment, and passion I've received from the Parks Department, our committee members, and the Oshkosh community as a whole, and thankful for all their hard work in making this possible. Without them, my vision would just have been a dream, not reality. We talk a lot about inclusion and building an inclusive park in Oshkosh, but our overall mission has never just been about building a park, it's been about bringing awareness, understanding, and support to making our community more inclusive, inviting to all people. One question that I've heard many times is, well, aren't your parks in Wisconsin, or in Oshkosh already inclusive, or accessible, rather? And although we do have some very amazing playgrounds, none of them are 100% accessible to all people, and that is really what we want to bring to Oshkosh. I just wanted to touch a little bit on some of the pieces. We have a picture of what the park layout is going to look like. Okay, thank you. We have the Sway Fun, this is gonna be an accessible piece where people in wheelchairs or walkers can roll right onto.
Excuse me, a second. Is there a way we can get that in front of the camera at all, or not?
There you go.
It's kind of...
There it is, okay.
Andy's a genius.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Sorry to interrupt you.
No, you're fine.
I want people at home to be able to see it also.
Lighten the mood a little bit.
Okay.
The Sway Fun pictured here is going to allow people in wheelchairs or walkers to be able to roll right onto the structure in their wheelchair and be able to play alongside other people, or other children, excuse me, and have the same sensation that they would from a swing without having to be transported out of their wheelchair. We're going to have double wide ramping throughout the entire structure to allow, again, people with mobility issues to be able to get to all parts of the structure. And some other aspects is we'll have the bucket seating with harness apparatus and the swing structures. We also have a quieter area on one end of the park to really help with children that get overwhelmed and overstimulated but still want to have that participation in the park and have an area to play. Throughout the structure, we're gonna have panels that will touch upon visual and hearing impairments as well. Along with that, we'll also have your typical monkey bars, balance beams, slides, and other things, so really an inviting playground for all children and all families. As a final phase to this project, we're also launching our picket fence campaign March 1st. This is where people will be able to take a stake in our community. People have the opportunity to have their name engraved on individual pickets, and they will be, it'll enclose the structure, the fencing. We want, we just really want all people of all ages to come and enjoy one aspect or another and bring friends and family together in an inviting atmosphere.
Is that all you want to say, or do you want to say some other things?
That's all I want to say.
Give you a little more time.
Thank you.
Have enough time to speak to the other people also.
You have a Facebook page as well, right?
Yes, we definitely have a Facebook page, which most people are on Facebook, so you can find us there, just type in the inclusive park, or Oshkosh Inclusive Park Project. On there, we also have a website, too, with some additional information and all of our community support and donors that we've had throughout these last four years.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for your efforts, thanks for the information.
Hey, I'm Delap, 685 Clairville. I'm actually gonna be reading on behalf of Sarah Moberg, 2430 Kingston Place. Grandma uses a cane and wants to take her six-year-old granddaughter to the park to play. Dad lost his left foot due to a medical condition and uses a wheelchair to access his community. He enjoys pushing his toddler son on the swing. Nine-year-old little girl has medical condition that affects her muscles and requires her to use a wheelchair to access her community. She just wants to play with her friends on the park equipment. These are three situations that are just a sample of opportunities that our community members miss out on because we don't have a fully accessible playground. The mission of the Oshkosh Inclusive Park is to create a safe and accessible outdoor recreational environment for individuals of all abilities and ages. The park will include a completely accessible play area with a rubberized ground surface and safety fence. The ultimate goal of the project is to create a national, a natural environment where values of acceptance, empathy, kindness, and respect are being modeled and learned through recreation, civility, and acceptance of diversity within our Oshkosh community. The Oshkosh Inclusive Park Project will provide children and adults alike an opportunity to engage with everyone in their local community regardless of their functional ability. The committee has worked to bring about an increased awareness of inclusivity through hosting tables and floats at various community events, Zuluine, St. Patty's Day Parade, farmers' markets. It is not only the only, it's not only about the fundraising that our community, our committee has successfully accomplished, but the awareness that we have shared with our community that everyone deserves access to community resources. Our committee would like to thank the Oshkosh City Council for your consideration for additional funding to make this dream a reality. Again, that's from Sarah Moberg.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Gail Hawley, and I grew up in Oshkosh and taught at Lourdes for my first four years out of college, and now I teach at St. Mary's Central High School in Nina. As a teacher of high school students, I have witnessed the benefits of an inclusive community in which students grow up playing together and learning together. Differences are accepted and even celebrated when children play and learn together. I believe inclusion is a learned behavior, and it begins in childhood. For this reason, I feel that this playground is needed in our community, and I'm asking you to support it.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward?
I was gonna speak on behalf of Jennifer Tabbert and her family. My name is Jennifer Tabbert. I have three small children, Colson, Kaylee, and Caroline, eight of seven, five, and one. My son, Colson, is in a wheelchair, and he is not able to walk, has limited use of his arms due to a condition called anarthromatosis. As a mother, it's important to me to be able to provide an environment for my children that allow them to play and learn and have fun, and most of all, to just be a kid. This park is incredibly important to me because it will allow all my, all three of my children to play together. Imagine that. You see, it's not easy for us. The playground near our house has wood chips down. My son's wheelchair digs in, and he has been stuck on numerous occasions in the wood chips. The playground near us has stairs and ladders to climb on to the playground equipment. The playground near our house is nothing but a reminder to my son of his limitations. Imagine the look on my seven-year-old boy's face when his sister runs around the playground and he's stuck, quite literally sometimes stuck in the wood chips, watching them play and watching them play with new friends while he watches. What's a boy to do? It hurts my heart as his mama. He doesn't deserve this. As a parent, how do you choose which child to disappoint? Should that even be an option? Well, it's something I face often. My daughter loves going to the playground to play, my son does not. Do I take them to the playground and watch my son's heart break as he's reminded of all the things he can't do? Or do I disappoint my daughter and tell her we can, we should stay home, simply because her brother cannot use the playground? I dream of the day this inclusive playground is built. I dream of the day I can say yes to all of my children, yes to all three of my children to run around and play together. This is my story, and this is what the playground will mean to me. This playground will mean so many different things to so many different people of so many different ages and abilities. I cannot wait to see people come together and enjoy the new Oshkosh Inclusive Park. Thank you so very much.
Want to get the head mic? Ray? Ray? I think it's on.
My name is Shandy Buke. I live at 224 East Tennessee Avenue. Now, I share the Oshkosh Inclusive Park Project, is grateful to the generous donors, corporations, and individuals that have embraced what it means to be inclusive in the city of Oshkosh. I've been part of the committee since the beginning. One of the responsibilities is to take care in one of our Facebook page, which we have shared stories of why this park is so important. As of this morning, we are over 500 likes on our page, which, which to me, shows people are engaged in the purpose of this project. For those of you who didn't know before, I'm in a wheelchair. I moved to Oshkosh because of the opportunity to be independent. I've had folks like Judy Burton and the CPA organization support my dreams and desires of being an independent person. My desires include changing our perception of people with disabilities. This mission, the mission of this project aligns with my dreams of being valued and included in my community like any other citizen of Oshkosh. It means a lot to me to be part of such a great project. Thank you for this opportunity, and I hope you will approve this proposal tonight.
Thank you.
I'm Delap, 685 Clairville.
You're reading on behalf of someone else now.
Nope, I'm, this is my turn.
This one's yours.
And so I come to you tonight with complete gratitude. Four years ago, you opened the door to a group of citizens in the community, a group of individuals that care about the community and have used our passion to inspire others. We have spent hundreds of hours speaking with, about inclusion. We have talked to friends and neighbors, local business leaders, service groups, and city officials. The project created opportunities to talk about kindness, respect, acceptance, and the value of others at any age or ability, any color, any religious or ethnic background. We have educated people through our conversations about the differences between ADA law and inclusion. Removing physical barriers is just the first step towards the goal of community inclusion. The common council opened the door for citizen engagement, and that is something that we are truly grateful for. Yes, it's four years since we started this project, and that's a long time to be fundraising. This time was actually a gift. The community conversation about inclusion has made significant impact in Oshkosh, and that four-time, that four-year timeframe was time well spent. We, as ordinary citizens, were able to take our passion and make positive change within our community, and you created that opportunity. The support between the city of Oshkosh and the Community Foundation has been nothing short of amazing. Their support in helping us to raise the funds has been a critical, has been critical to the success of completing the project. Isn't this the perfect model of how communities are built? We are creating a place that people search for when raising their families, a community that cares enough about its residents to build venues like the Oshkosh Inclusive Park, a place where neighbors help neighbors, business leaders get involved in inclusion conversations, and city officials engage their citizens to promote healthy, positive values. We are proud of these accomplishments and truly appreciate the critical partnerships that make the city of Oshkosh such a great, great place to live. We hope you will consider the additional allocation to the project so that we can begin in the spring. Once the project is completed and city residents and visitors to our event city discover this addition, it will become a long-term conversation about inclusion. Let this be a place that creates possibilities for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Diane Abraham, 175 Wildwood Drive. I'm here representing the Oshkosh Area Community Foundation, and what can I say after we heard all of this with, we are just, the foundation is so proud to have partnered with the Parks Department and this wonderful committee that really worked very tirelessly to really kick the fundraising goal efforts out of the park. And I just have to say, listening to the comments that were made, I can speak on behalf of the foundation, we are very inspired over these past years of the work that they have done, not only to do all the fundraising work that needed to be done and talk to all the donors that we have that supported this project, to really bring this conversation to the community that needed to be done. Clearly, an inclusive park was an unmet need in the community, and clearly, we got the job done with supporting it to $140,000. So I really want to not only thank the committee and the city for working together, but all the generous donors that we have that did support this project. I'd like to call out that we had the John Kinsel Foundation made a significant gift of $25,000, and Community First Credit Union also made a match gift of $25,000. And we were so inspired at the foundation level that the board made a $50,000 grant to this project. We just think that this is so important to the city and highlights how important our public and private partnerships are to make the city a better place to live, a better place for everybody of all abilities to have those positive experiences in a playground setting. So with that, I do want to shout out to the committee the great work that they did and also the work that you do in supporting our, the quality of life in Oshkosh.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come forward at this point in time? If not, I'll bring it back to the council for a motion and a second on Resolution 15-94.
So moved.
Second.
Second, moved and second, discussion?
Just a round of applause to the committee members. I think your efforts in this are... Thank you, guys.
Others?
Just a quick question. We discussed this at Parks Advisory Board and unanimously approved recommending it. I know at the time, there was some discussion of some of the additional funds because the committee had gone over and above what, even what they had anticipated in fundraising. And Mr. Roloff, I don't know if you could explain, Mr. Mauer had told our Parks Advisory Board that through some discussions with Ms. Larson... Board that through some discussions with Ms. Larson and yourself, we had identified where that additional funding can come from, from, I believe, it was previous capital improvement budgets that weren't tapped into?
Yes, we have several capital project budgets that were under budget over the last couple of years, and Mr. Maurer is proposing that we use those funds as our additional allocation. We could use that to borrow less, but it was borrowed for in anticipation of a project getting done. We could simply allocate it over, and the resolution you have in front of you would effectuate that change and would fund it completely.
And ultimately, that difference has zero net impact on our current year operating budget or on our current year borrowing?
Not at all.
Thank you.
Other comments?
I'd just like to say that it's really inspiring to see so many times we've heard things in this community we can't, and it's turned around to we can, and tonight, it's going to be turned into we did. So, congratulations, and thank you for your hard work.
Yes.
Mr. Maurer, when will it be completed?
Four years from now.
Oh. You can leave right now, Ray.
Not a good answer, Ray. I'm looking behind you.
Wrong answer.
No, what we're looking at is weather-dependent. We'd like to begin excavation sometime mid-April. Installation of the equipment takes about three weeks, and then with the poured-in-place rubber surfacing, the temperatures need to be at a certain temperature before they can put that product in. But our hope is, weather permitting, that it would be completed mid to late May. We'd like to have everything restored and ready to go by the time school is ended.
That's great.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Just to make a final comment, I just want to thank, again, everybody else involved, the citizens involved, the foundation, Community First, the Kinsey Foundation. Also, I want to thank the taxpayers. I'm particularly proud of this project because I think it's something that's needed. It will provide access, and at the same time, it's a good spending of dollars in the community, taxpayer dollars in the sense of providing inclusion, but also, for every taxpayer dollar out there, there's 100% in private funds here. As we get into big-ticket items, particularly in a lot of the quality-of-life features in the community, the public-private partnerships are absolutely critical, and that's happened here, and it has happened in some other areas. So, to follow Mr. Peck's comments, we can do things as long as people work together. So, thank you all. Okay, our last clerk take the roll call vote on Resolution 15-49.
Pat?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Carrie Seven?
Takes us to Resolution 15-95, Establish Fees for Natural Prairie Prescribed Burning Permit and Fire Services. Anybody like to comment on that? Seeing no one comment on it, I'll bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion, comments, questions? Seeing none, I'll ask clerk to take the roll call vote on Resolution 15-95.
Pat?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pansky?
Aye.
Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Tower?
Aye.
Carrie Seven?
Okay, it takes us to council discussion, direction of city manager and future agenda items. The first one is Go EDC branding kickoff meeting at the Convention Center on March 12th at 7:30. Mr. Roloff, want to comment on that?
I think you said it all. It's going to be the kickoff where the brand for Go EDC is going to be unveiled, but we do have the official time and date. We will get you out of there at 9 o'clock. That's a pledge that we're going to make so that people can get back to their schedule, but we're going to hopefully have some special guests there. May or may not include some folks at the state level, may include a new Go EDC executive director, depending on how things go. So, a lot of good things going on. I may have mentioned, we hired Aaron Sutton, the Go EDC did as the marketing director, and she, one of the things she's working on is this event, so you'll see some of the fruits of her labor when we do that on March 12th.
Hopefully, as many people as possible can attend, where it's going to be an exciting time and plus an opportunity for people to learn more about what Go EDC is and what it plans to do over the, into the future. Future agenda item, workshop tour of Public Works Field Operation Facility located at 639 Whitsel Avenue. We had said we wanted to take a tour as a council. It's been set up for 4:30. That may not be a time when all can arrive, but I suspect people can arrive whenever they're able to arrive and see it. It's a new and large facility on the inside.
Yeah, if your schedule doesn't work, we'll get you in there, and if you can't make it at all this time, just contact Street Superintendent, Field Operations Superintendent, Kevin Yuan, and we can arrange a private tour as well, but we'll cover a lot of the ground that you didn't see when it was underway, that hadn't been underway the last time you saw it. So, really exciting and happy to have you take a tour.
Okay, and next thing, Estarek Heritage Tourism Program, Mr. Cummings.
Thank you, Mayor Tower. This is something that has been worked on for the last couple of years by the Landmarks Commission. We first began with historic markers to go along the riverfront. Next, we started to phase in historic plaques for, you know, buildings, houses, and so forth through the city. This is another true partnership or collaboration between a number of different groups. It involves Convention and Visitors Bureau, the museum, Bid Board, Library, Landmarks, the foundation, and the Winnebago County Historical and Archaeological Society. Our plans are to begin launching historic tours, and our first step will be in the central city. We've looked at an area from Irving to the river and Jackson to Broad where the bulk of the historic buildings remain in the city. We met with the State Historical Society this morning to start looking at having a neoclassical district declared, which is the library, the old post office, that area. This whole program is really to bring people to the community who spend money. Historic tourism is becoming very big in the country. People do plan trips around historic tours. It's a way to generate income for the community. We're looking at things, you know, how do we develop tours to get heads and beds? Anyway, the first thing we need to do is put together an inventory of all the historic properties in the central city to begin with. There's lots of different old tours and brochures we have to consolidate. Working with the Convention and Visitors Bureau, we want to start doing basically a spreadsheet of the historic properties in the central city. That's the first step, then it's developing tourism programs, and then we'll move beyond the central city with other programs. Once we have the inventory, then it's to determine what type of tours do we put together? It's just, there's a phenomenal variety of ways to handle this tourism, so that is stage one, or step one. And with that, I'll turn to Mr. Roloff for our modest request.
Mr. Cummings had the creative part, I have the more technical part. The cost to have somebody put this information together is estimated to be about $2,000. Because this is tourism-related, I think if this is something that we want to do, then it would be appropriate to use some room tax dollars, the Convention Center Room Tax Fund. Mr. Cummings and some of the staff have had discussions with the CBB. It sounds like they're willing to take the lead on managing the program, but getting this information would cost us about $2,000, we figure, when all is said and done. So, I'd propose that we take it out of the Convention Center slash Room Tax Fund that we maintain for that purpose. So, not necessarily, for $2,000 expenditure, I can certainly do it, but I just wanted to get some consensus that that was something that the council was comfortable with me doing. I'm prepared to do it. It's been something that has been discussed at the CBB for quite a while now.
Well, I'll say yes, because if I don't, I'll get hit from my inside here, so.
Yeah, I think it's worthwhile.
I think one of the big things could be trying to figure out who's going to manage the process after that point, so hopefully, the group will do that, because it takes some management to run it, so.
And I think that that's-
The CBB would be picking up that responsibility, not the city.
They will take the lead.
I'm happy to say the $2,000, if the CBB takes it over, so.
Mayor, I can add to that. As a representative of the CBB, it has been brought up as a discussion item. It would just be another tool in the toolbox for conventions and groups coming to Ashgash. It's probably going to be more of a self-guided tour than it would be more of someone taking them around.
It'll be a-
That's a possibility. I know that the Winnebago County Archaeological and Historical Society is willing to donate some money towards this program, but apparently, that was turned down by the city, and so I'm-
Not aware of a request.
Well, I was approached by the chair of that committee, and they were going to pay for the whole thing, and then he said, "We don't need their money." So, a little disappointed to hear that. I support this, and I agree, it's good use of the room tax dollars because it could generate, again, another tool in our toolbox to bring citizens to Ashgash, to stay at our hotels and that, but I think we should never look the other way when organizations want to, just like the Inclusive Park, want to help the city to bring something forward that we turn it down. But either way, I support it, and I think it's a good way to go.
If you give me more detail later on, I'd look into that, because I'm not aware of anybody turning something down, but thank you for letting me know.
We can do that outside the meeting.
Yeah, please. Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments? So, I guess, and you do have the authority to do that, so unless somebody has a comment in opposition to that, we'll assume that that's going to happen. The city manager will take care of it. Okay, it takes us to kind of three items. I'm going to hit 1, 2, 3 as I know them. My terms come and do it, do an end-up here, as I come to an end-up here, trying to look ahead based on some experiences I've had in the past. And so, there are three things here I wanted to touch base on, and one actually has a couple of subparts to it, so I'll mention them now. There may be a couple of more before I'm gone in April. Gone from the podium, but gone.
Yeah, careful, I'll use it.
Okay, the first one's a recruitment for replacement of a council member. As we know, we had the primary, and let's congratulate Mr. Cummings and Ms. Pansky coming out of the primary. They'll be running for election on the first Tuesday in April. Both these individuals were elected last year to council, which means that one of them, and one of them's going to be elected this year, so there will be a vacancy on the council. We have a process where the council is, we actually have, the council is actually responsible, will be responsible for replacing one of these two people on the council. What we've done in the past is put together a process. The process might take 30 to 40 days or whatever to put together the process, agree, and then notify people. But what I think, since we know this is going to happen ahead of time, what I'm suggesting here, and I've talked to the city manager about this, is that what would happen is that Slaughterson would put together a proposed process for selecting that person, would get the process started, would get the process started ahead of time. I think there's a one-page process before. And maybe at the next council meeting, would present that process to the council, and so therefore, we could begin to kick that process off with the hope that a council member could be selected at the first council meeting, no later than the second council meeting when the new council meets. So, we don't have to have six people on the council before it's taken us a little while to get done. So, hopefully, that will get done. Something's being passed around now, but I don't think we're ready to talk about it.
It's a smaller one. This is the procedure to fill council vacancies. This is a section of the code that refers to this. And the city attorney and I talked, in addition to bringing this up at the next meeting, it may be appropriate to tweak our ordinance just a bit, just to clarify what we're doing. We're being more proactive than we ever have before, and if you look at this, you'll notice that I added the, it was adopted through ordinance 09179 on May 12th of '09, and it was after a council vacancy was filled, and the observation was, well, we need to give time for the council to open up recruitment for that, and that's why the 30 days is in there. But I don't think we necessarily anticipated being a little more proactive, because one of the concerns that was expressed by council in subsequent years was that the mayor cannot make appointments to boards and committees because we don't have the sixth, or the sixth council seat filled, so the idea would be to move that up. It may be appropriate, if you take a look at the, I'm just going to read the first sentence. It says, pursuant to the terms and conditions of Section 1723 statutes, in the event of a vacancy on the council, the clerk shall, it says, within 14 days of a vacancy. I think all we need to do is say, or anticipated vacancy. Given the fact that the numbers strongly suggest that we're going to have a vacancy after the mayoral election, it just makes sense that we can start the recruitment now. So, the city attorney and I think maybe what we want to do is just insert that little change that we can start the recruitment without anybody questioning it. We wouldn't want somebody to misinterpret it. We had done that last time, and as we looked at this go-around, we can have council adopted on first reading and then start the 30 days on May, or immediately after March 10th, after the ordinance gets adopted. You give plenty of time until the election. We'd have a full 30 days for council to recruit, and then, once we decide which seat shifts, we know we're going to have an empty seat regardless of the outcome, so then you'll have that 30 days. People can express an interest. It'll be after the election, but before you're seated, you'll have people to choose from at that point. So, if that's something you'd like to do, we would just tweak it.
We'll get a full council, and thereby, the new mayor, whoever it is, can make the appointments, plus you'll have seven people on the council as soon as possible, which I think is important. Okay, so for people watching out there, there will be probably some notice at some point, a few weeks down the way of a vacancy, which will be out there, so if people are thinking about wanting to be appointed.
Mayor?
Yes?
This procedure was adopted through an ordinance. Does that have to come back to council if you're making changes in the ordinance?
Yep, that's what he's suggesting.
Then it's two readings, so.
What I suggest is we waive the first reading at the next meeting so that we can start the 30-day recruitment process immediately after adoption, and then that would give you the 30 days. Then it would be around April 12th. Your council meeting that is, will be April 14th, so you'll have plenty of time from then, and the new council won't even be seated then, so you'll actually, the recruitment process will have closed, and the new council, when it gets seated, will have all the applications in front of them.
Is that reasonable?
Sounds good.
Okay, we've got an action to move forward there. The next thing has to do with tech upgrade, and we talk about this on two levels. One is, the council chamber really hasn't been remodeled or new technology in over 20 years. As you can see from these TVs, you might see some of these in old hotel rooms or something like that. And also, a lot of the things that Andy has back there is kind of outdated technology back there. So, I think we're going to need some new technology. In fact, the city manager in doing it has also put aside some money to look for new technology here for a variety of reasons. One, this is outdated. The other is, if we have new technology, we think that some things can be done that will be, make it easier for citizens that are here in the council chamber and on TV to follow the agendas. We can do some things like scrolling and other things. So, we'd like to look into new technology, and so, at the same time we're doing that, we thought it might be wise to take a look at some renovation in the council chamber, because it may be changing the placement of the technology, maybe have a very large screen up front. I'm not sure what it'll look like. And so, what I'd like to propose here, if it's okay with the council, is I would appoint a committee which would talk about the technology and also looking at making some council updates here in the council chamber. This is called the council chamber, so I think it's up to the council to play a rather large role in what changes might be made in the way of innovation. So, what I'd like to do, if it's okay with the council, is appoint a subcommittee of council members to work with staff in talking about renovation and maybe have a report back like the first or second week in May to the rest of council. In doing so, I would probably appoint Mr. Cummings and Ms. Pansky, since I think the mayor ought to be on it, one of you two is going to be the mayor, and ask for a volunteer for a third member that would work with staff, looking at renovation and the technology in here over, and then come back with a report, which, and working with staff by the first week in May. Does that make sense to people? Are you okay, Mr. Cummings?
I'm fine.
You okay, Ms. Pansky?
Yep.
Anybody else like to volunteer for that committee? Who's going to be here afterwards, so you and I are out of the picture.
I may look at my schedule for the next couple of weeks, and I'll get back to you.
Okay, why don't you look at it, because it might mean some meetings during the day since we're meeting with staff. If not, we can add to that. So, at least we have two members. We'll look, Mr. Peck will look, see if that can work. If not, we'll figure out what we're going to do, or maybe it'll only be two members, or-
But there is a retired person.
Ms. Allison Osby or Mr. Herman may want to be involved. Okay, I think these are things that are needed. When did we decide? 1995 was?
That was the last time we had it in the TVs.
And I think these were old TVs then when they put them up.
Andy, can you get a shot of the TVs?
That'd be a little weird. The technology behind us, behind Andy, is really getting outdated. Support for it is dropping. You know, the TVs- outdated. Support for it is dropping. You know, the TVs, in terms of what the technology is now, you saw Mr. DeShane's presentation, you know, we need to do something with that. But, as the mayor said, this is called the council chambers for a reason, but instead of us just putting something in here on some Tuesday, and you say, where did this come from? I really think it would help if we had council input on this, and if it means that we're not going to be doing it again for another 20 years, I think we want to make sure that it's going to have some, some lasting power to it. And then, if I could, Mr. Mayor, the tech upgrade was really to kind of pitch to council some new technology, you know.
I wanted to go into that after Finney says. I wanted to do the council chamber and then talk about that also.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, so we, we got at least two-thirds of the committee settled. We're going to move forward with that. We'll get done fairly early. It'd be nice to have that done over the summer. The second part of the technology has to do with the little notebooks that a couple of people are using. The city manager uses, Mr. Herman uses. The technology that backs those up is no longer going to be supported, so we have to do something else. The other thing is, is that the, the cost of these, producing this paper is rather expensive, both in terms of human time and in terms of paper. So, what I'd like to suggest and began to, begun to look into is basically advocating that, that we go to tablet, a tablet form for all council members, and basically require all council members to use it under, under the new council. And one thing, Mr. Herman and, and Mr. Rolloff to get together with, with Tony and look at some possibilities of kinds of tablets with various kinds of criteria attached to them. One, obviously, being cost. A second being readability. It has to do with resolution and, and size. Another has to do with capability. I think the mayor needs certain capabilities up here as, as he or she prepares for the meeting and, and works through the meetings, and council members do the same. So, that's the reason I wanted Mr. Herman and myself to take a look at kinds of capabilities. And we reviewed a number of different kinds of tablets that were out there. Basically identified one that we think is good, that will be very easy to use. It's, it's a touchscreen tablet. It's a larger tablet screen than is what they're, very high resolution. It has the capability to make notes, and then just, you can make notes ahead of time, and then just touch something on the screen, and a note will pop up when you get to a particular item. It'll be noted where the note is. You'll be able to go to resolutions with just a touch on the screen. It'll be very easy even for, for folks that aren't quite as up-to-date technologically and all of those kinds of things. Principal reasons, again, for doing it, again, I think it makes us a little more modern here. It's going to save us some money. The payback, I asked what the payback would be. The payback will probably be about six months, what's been estimated, easily within a year. So, we looked at a variety of, of different tablets, and there's one that appears to be, to be good out there. Readability is very good. Capability is, is excellent in them. Did you bring one tonight?
I did. I'm, I'm actually using it tonight. It's a lot easier than the old one, because there was a lot of mechanics to move it and whatnot, but it does have the, the note-taking capability which it didn't have on the previous one. So, literally, the notes that I normally make on a piece of paper, I've been able to follow pretty easily tonight. It also navigates very well from one agenda item to the next. If you've got anyone in particular, you can bookmark it yourself. There's a lot of good capabilities with it. Mr. Newman is very excited about the possibility of council getting on board with this. He has offered to do whatever training's necessary to get you up to the advanced beginner level. After that, it's probably up to you, and I would suggest you get your kids or grandkids to show you how to use it.
Or we could go to the senior center.
You could go to the senior-
Take advantage of the mentoring program there.
But, the idea here is, it would be, be a tablet, and it props up real well, and Mr. Newman has also identified a keyboard that you could also use if necessary to follow it as well. So, we can do that. The resolution is, is outstanding compared to what Mr. Herman and I have been wrestling with over, with the netbook, and because the netbook was, it's not getting supported anymore, the software isn't, so I broke the news to Mr. Herman, and he didn't shed a tear.
Not once.
So, so it's something I, I really think it'd be worth council taking a look at, and happy to show you, do a demo with you at any time to show you what it's like. I'm also going to break the news that the department has it aren't here tomorrow morning, because the, the cost of putting together, as the mayor said, is pretty high, and we would have a fallback position for, you know, problems, technological problems which happen. Mr. Newman and I have talked about how we would handle those, so that we didn't have any, we weren't stuck at six o'clock on a Tuesday night, and nobody has anything in front of them, which I know is the city attorney's biggest fear. So, she's a paperwork fiend, so she, she knows that, but I think we can train everybody very easily, and you'll see that this is, it'll help you keep notes for, forever with, with this technology.
Couple, couple things, Mayor.
Yep, go ahead.
Just for council members, I hold the agenda on Friday night as a document, so if the system crashed over the weekend, let's just say, you'd have it saved already, your council agendas, because you would have that on your, as a document, as a Word document. Second, you'll be able to use it as your city email, so you won't have to use your personal computers and things at home to get council emails or other things like that. So, there's, there's a lot of advantage to it, and with the technologies, Mr. Rolloff said, it, it's, you know, I, I'm a kind of a, I'm a non-computer person. I get around with it. So, if I can do it, I think the rest of us can get up to speed. Mr. Newman said he would be more than happy to, as he said, do some tutorials for the council outside of council meetings. So, you know, if we wanted to come in and like a workshop, almost like before council meetings, and there would be backups. Other things, when there's been documents where I actually want paper, I then just ask the city manager's assistant to, to make copies for me, and I'll pick them up. So, you can still get hard copies on certain resolutions and things that if you really think you want that. So, I, I think we have the best of both worlds this way. And it's, it's roughly, I talked to the girl that does our binders for a calendar year, it's about $5,500 in paper. Because think about all the different times we get a resolution, like tonight, we have an ordinance that she printed out for us. We had the whole ordinance. Two weeks from now, we're going to get it all back again. She doesn't pull that out of the binder. She's got to reprint that. So, you know, I mentioned it in the fall during the budget session, that we need to look at all our different small things as ways to save some money in our budget, and this is a way to save some money in our budget, is to go paperless.
I think it'll save some money and will be very useful. So, as I say, we've looked at technologies. There's one, unless people have, have heartburn over it, it's over there tonight. You can look at it. You could call Mr. Newman and go in and visit him if you want to look it over, over the next two weeks. Again, we talked about backup systems, number one, and also training, which are, which are both important-
Huge.
-to have. I think the training will be minimal with the ease of use. What I'm going to ask, if it's okay with the council, is to have it put on the agenda for next time, both the purchase, the purchase, number one, and number two, basically requiring the council members utilize the, the technology when the new council comes into being. So, there'll be time to be prepared by, by that time. So, is that okay if we put that on the agenda? You have two weeks to think about it, to ask all the questions that you may want to ask. Ms. Pansky?
Just in the meantime, then, address questions to Mark and, and Tony and-
Yep, about, about the technology. Yeah, sure. You can take a look, go over and take a look at it tonight.
You can ask Mark, and I'll probably ask Tony. No, I'm just kidding.
Well, I mean, have you thought ahead, too? Is a council member going to be assigned for the, the one tablet per their term?
Yeah, that's how it is now.
Are they, are they insured? I mean-
Yeah, by the city, they're insured by-
They're all insured, and Tony's got it all. That, those-
It's city-owned property.
I have two kids, you know.
It would be city-owned property.
They might like this more than I do.
Yeah, they can't use it.
But essentially, it sounds like the decision has already been made.
Although, I think it's up to the council. What we try to do is do all the groundwork. I'd like to see it done, but-
But essentially, the decision's-
The council says no.
But, I mean, based on the conversation tonight, it appears as if it, this is already a, has already been decided, so.
It's up to, ultimately up to, all the groundwork has been, been laid out there.
My understanding is that I'm, put this on next agenda for council to approve.
And any checking people want to do, or any questions at that time, it can be put off after that, if there are concerns about it at that particular point in time. Okay. Takes us back to citizen statements to the council. Respect the citizen statements to council. Again, another opportunity to come up and indicate something that you're happy with in the city, or unhappy with in the city. Please feel free to come up to the microphone, give us a, your name and address. Let your comments to no more than five minutes. No election hearing. Speak directly to the council, and don't speak to anything that's already been discussed on the business part of the agenda. See no one coming forward. Ask the city manager for announcements and statements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In your agenda packet, there's a memo from Mr. Maur regarding aquatic plant management and maintenance services. This is something that we've entered into the last couple of years, and fortunately, we have not had to use it, but we re-upped that contract. If we do have weed problems in Millers Bay primarily, we'll use this firm to, to remove the weeds. But, again, as I said, fortunately, we haven't had that problem in recent years. The other thing I didn't hit, put in there, but just want to plug, State of the City, is Monday, March 23rd, a month from yesterday, so put on your calendar. Doors open at 6:00, and State of the City address starts at 6:30. Thanks to all the council for their participation. You'll be amazed at the editing powers of our OCMS staff. You're going to look wonderful when all is said and done. So, thank you for your cooperation. I know varying degrees of interest in this, but appreciate that. And Mr. Peck, sounds like he has a commercial message. Mr. Cummings?
Well, you want to take this one, or?
Absolutely not. I'll let you go with it as well.
We both have the card out. You want to hold up the card?
I'll hold up the card.
Starting Saturday at the Oshkosh Public Museum, the Art of the Brick, which is some rather interesting Lego creations. Ms. Pansky mentioned her children. I know children are very interested in Legos.
Adults, too.
Yeah, adults, too. Well, we're all kids. Some of us are bigger kids than others. No comments. So, starts this weekend at the Oshkosh Public Museum, running through June 14th.
One other thing, while this is at the museum, the museum will be open every Wednesday until 7:00, and they'll have staff from the library at the museum doing activities for children, and big adults.
One question back on that aquatic plant management. I, I received a couple of phone calls over the years about the 24th Street boat landing, having issues with aquatic plants and things. Would this agreement, I know it's primarily Menami Park, but would we be able to do something in the 24th Street boat landing if there were issues there, too, off of this agreement?
Yep. If you take a look at the background portion of the memo, 24th Avenue Boat Launch is included.
Okay.
It's one of the areas that we do keep an eye on.
Okay. I'm sorry I missed that. Thank you.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
So.
Second?
Second.
Move to the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We're adjourned.